Good evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Welcome everybody to our council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Pastor Fair, if you're in the audience, please lead us in our prayer. And I know we've got some gentlemen from Troop 316 right out of Northport in the back. These gentlemen will lead us in our pledge of allegiance right from our prayer.
Let's pray together. God, we do thank you so much for today, just the blessings of life that you have given us. God, we thank you for this time that you brought us to this meeting here in the city of Northport. God, we especially thank you for just the prayers. I know that we're called out today with the situation that happened in Tuscaloosa, God, at the bank there. We thank you for the protection of all those that were involved, from our law enforcement, God, to those that responded, to those that worked there. God, including those that were involved, being suspects and in question, God. We just ask for your continued presence in all the lives of those that were involved today, God. We just ask now that you give us wisdom, that you give us vision for the future of the city of Northport, God, and lead each and every person here this day with you in mind. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Gentlemen, if you'll come on up.
....................................................................................
Mr. Rose, call roll, please.
Councilman Hamright, here. President Logan, here. Councilman Sullivan, here. Councilman Davis, here. Councilman Hogg. We have a call, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Item five is approval of the agenda. Mr. Rose, in his office, gave us a brief synopsis of our agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Move to print.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hamright. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 8A1 is a first reading of an ordinance annexing 1.4 acres located at 350 Hunter Creek Lane. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir. This is the first reading for the annexation on this property on Hunter Creek Lane. I received a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. As a side note, the petitioner is aware of this, but the city is unable to provide garbage service at this address. The main reason for annexation is for water service.
Thank you. So, I bring with me counsel, I'd like to offer that for our first reading.
I'll offer that for first reading.
Thank you. That's a first reading offered up by Councilman Sullivan. Second item is also a first reading of an ordinance rezoning those same 1.4 acres located at 350 Hunter Creek Lane. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir. This is, the initial zoning on the annexation is AG Agricultural, and the request is rezoned from AG to single-family residential, which will be appropriate for the proposals.
Thank you.
He received a favorable recommendation from the planning commission.
So, I bring with me counsel to offer that one up for a first reading.
I'll offer that, what would you say?
Thank you. 8B1 is a resolution authorizing the 2017 cooperative maintenance agreement with ALDOT. Ms. Starnes?
Yes, Mr. President. This is the maintenance agreement for 2017 year for the state right away, where we mowed the right away from Mardle Road Road to Coker.
Thank you. This is a yearly agreement. We're only required to do how many cuts?
Two.
We do two hundred.
Once a week.
We do 200 cuts, so don't they? So, they're getting a good deal from the city of Northport.
They are.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution authorizing the city administrator's office to execute a cooperative maintenance agreement with ALDOT for maintenance of the public right-of-way along McFarland Boulevard for the year 2017?
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Item two is a resolution declaring certain items as any equipment is surplus and authorizing their disposal. Ms. Starnes, this is a L-35 Kubota Baco, which will basically be auctioned off, and those monies will go back into the general fund, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution declaring the L-35 Kubota Baco as surplus and authorizing its proper disposal?
I'm going to approve it.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hamright. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you. Item three is a resolution ratifying the revised consulting agreement with Mr. Charles Swan. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. President. You know, at the last council meeting, you approved an agreement between the city, signed by Mayor Rose and Charles Swan, who agreed, even though he was retiring on December 31, to assist the elected officials and department heads with some items, budgets, and other things for a period of time. This is slightly modified. The Ethics Commission has recently changed these types of transition agreements to limit those to three months, and that's what we've done. So, this has already been signed by Mayor Air and signed by Charles Swan, as you can see from your copy that's attached, already signed by Tom Albrecht, who's the chair of the Ethics Commission approving it. So, we just ask that you ratify it, since we bring it back up, since it's slightly different than what you passed at the last meeting.
Thank you. So, again, ratifying a revised consulting agreement with Mr. Charles Swan for three months, again, still keeping it step with our Ethics Commission, which has been vetted by their office in Montgomery. Is there a motion to approve that resolution ratifying the revised consulting agreement with Mr. Charles Swan?
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second? I'll make that in a second. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item five is a resolution commending Sheldon State Community College's 5th A Capa Honor Society for participating in the Honors in Action Project. Mr. Rose?
Yes, sir. 5th A Capa is a honor society at Sheldon State, and as part of their service projects every year, they get involved, and with 2016 being our election year, they did a resolution wanting us, the city of Northport, as well as others, to commend them on their work. What they did is they wanted to, all public officials, elected officials across the state, to reaffirm their dedication to ethics and morals and good government, and they wanted us to commend them on their work through this resolution.
Thank you. I move to approve the adoption of that resolution commending Sheldon State Community College's 5th A Capa Honor Society for participating in the Honors in Action Project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hamright. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six is a resolution reaffirming the appointments to the Tuscaloosa County Industrial Development Authority Board, or the TCIDA. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. President. The mayor was contacted by the IDA and indicated that our three appointments have terms consistent with the term with this mayor and council, and Mayor Air has contacted all three of the existing members. They expressed the willingness to be reappointed, and so there are three resolutions for you to consider reappointing these same three members, but you can go to them separately. That's the pleasure of council.
Thank you, Ron. Again, these will be called on separately by council members, so we'll start with the first name. I make a motion to approve the resolution reaffirming the appointment of Mr. Doug Holican to the IDA board with his term expiring in 2020. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Second name, of course, is Mr. James Barnett. Is there a motion to approve the resolution reaffirming the appointment, or reappointment of Mr. James Barnett to the IDA board with his term expiring in 2020?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hamright. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Stand.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next name is Glenn Crowe, to have the motion to approve the resolution reaffirming the reappointment of Mr. Glenn Crowe to the IDA board with his term expiring in 2020.
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second? I'll make that in a motion of a second. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C is our consent agenda. There are eight items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training, and three P.O. requisitions regarding our IT and its department, and of course, travel and training to our planning department. Again, these are eight items for council consideration for approval. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed? I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Rose.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. Again, mayor, members of council, in our pre-meeting, we discussed, just very briefly, the, we reactivated a lot of our committees to council, so we're still in the planning processes, and we're having some meetings this week, so if any member of council wanted to give a brief update, you have the floor. I'll give one for retail, if it pleases the mayor and council. I know I served with Councilman Hogg on the retail and property and development committee, and we've met one time, and we've actually had the opportunity to informally kind of discuss retail strategies. They came by a few weeks ago and gave us a presentation on some of the things that they can offer the city of Northport in terms of retail improvement, and development, and data, and metrics, and analytics for our city. That was a good meeting for mayor and council to be a part of, so what Councilman Hogg and myself have done the last week or so is to reach out to different municipalities. Councilman Hogg has reached out to a number of municipalities that has used retail strategies. We've met with members of the chamber leadership, so we wanted to open it up as much as we can, so we can have a good pool of knowledge to use and work from. I've been on my own, maybe informally, asking our development community, our local real estate brokers community, getting their perspective on if the city chooses to consult with a retail consultant. Again, I'll have a more formal report by next council meeting with Councilman Hogg, but all indications led me to believe we're trying to get everybody the most information. The chamber has some good ideas about a potential consultant maybe to come in and give another presentation, so you'll probably hear about that in the next week or so. So, that is a brief report from our retail committee. Again, we'll have something a little bit more formalized at our next meeting. So, that's all I have on the retail committee side. Any other member of council have anything to add?
If you would, I will let you know that we are having a meeting with the administrative committee tomorrow at 3:30. It is open to the public here at the city house, so if you ever want to come, we'll be here at 3:30.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Hamright. Item 10, public hearings. We have none on the agenda. Item 11, city administrator's business. I'll get to you, I think you may want to speak during citizen comments. Yes, sir. Item 11, city administrator's business. Mr. Rose?
I have no business. I just want to thank all of our employees for this past weekend. It really threw all of the events that we had. We had some winter weather, as y'all all know, this weekend, and just their dedication to the city and trying to keep those major orders open, you know, kind of, they don't get the glory that we do sitting up here on the stage, but those guys are out there at night risking their lives every time, you know, winter weather, we have any type of inclement weather that comes our way, police, fire, public works, utilities, and our water plant operators. They are there through ice, snow, tornadoes, to provide the services that we get every day. I just want to thank all those guys for their dedication to the city, and if you see one of them, just thank one back and tell them thank you, because it was pretty brutal out there Friday night, just the cold and the weather, and I just want to thank all those guys and all of our employees for the work that they do. That's all.
Thank you. Item 12, departmental business. I think we had Mr. Webb out of our engineering department wanted to give a reminder for actually an upcoming public involvement meeting.
Yes, Council President Logan. We're going to have a public involvement meeting for Fifth Street Traffic Calm Project. This is a project through ALDOT. There's no city funding involved in this. We're hosting it Wednesday, January 18th, here in the council chambers. It's going to begin at four o'clock. Everybody can view the presentation and look over the information, and at 4:30, they'll then give a formal presentation on the project, and again, at 5:30, they'll give the same presentation in case people come in late and can't make it at 4:30. We ask everybody, please, attend this. They'll take all comments into consideration and move forward.
Again, John, this is basically a proposed traffic calming project where at the intersection of Bridge Avenue and I call it Rice My Road and Fifth Street, the proposal is to alleviate some of the backed-up traffic maybe that's coming east and then actually south from Tuscaloosa in the form of a traffic circle. So, it'll change the look of that intersection at Bridge Avenue and Fifth Street. Again, this is a public involvement meeting, and we always know we have more people come out to speak and get something, but in this case, $0 from the city is being used. It's going to alleviate traffic long-term, and it's going to add some value in terms of beautification at some point.
Yes.
What's wrong with that?
In my opinion, nothing.
But again, Wednesday, January 18th, 4:00 p.m., 4:30 and 5:30. Thanks, John. Item 13 is public comment. I know, Jody, you have signed to speak, and I've got one other citizen maybe came in a little later, so I know you're on the...
I am, sir.
Yes, sir. Sir, please come to the podium, and you want to speak? Yes, sir. Thanks for coming.
Yep.
State your name and address for the record, and what can we do?
Joseph Page, living in Eddie Green Village. Carried on from the old council. I know some of the old, new councils. Younger mayor. I've been going through this for a long time, and I'm sure of it, because of the hook and over.
Yes, sir.
And they sent it to the committee on, and they tried to say that the water, I mean, the cars parked in the yard caused water to run back up there, but I have these pictures here. I have them on my iPhone, but I got to get, you want to look at them again? You saw this, and we agreed that the city would take care of it. It's changed the water pipe, and you know, the water was backing up in my yard, raining debris and stuff, and washed all my topsoil out. You all agreed, you all were going to take care of it. But then I got to this meeting, they tried to switch, switch gears on me, telling me that the cars had changed, but I have these pictures here, you can have a look at them.
Sure, Mr. Page, and I know you don't want to give those pictures up.
I got one on the back on my iPhone, too, so I mean, I don't worry about my...
Can we do this? And give me a number, too, that way, because what I like to do is make the staff look at those pictures and...
I've been beating and beating, it's been going on for...
Years.
They changed them pipes three times.
Let's see the pictures, Mr. Page. Yeah, because I know you come by, and I think...
I had told these...
And I pass them down to council and mayor.
Take a look at them. And I went to beating, and we agreed that we're going to take care of this, you know.
Hey, John, is that something we need to be looking at ASAP? Because it looks like we need to look at it ASAP, and this is probably after that big rain we had, Mr. Page?
Well, no.
All the time?
I mean, the drainage is clearing now.
It is.
I'm trying to get reimbursed for what it did before. I mean, the water, you can see the water...
Yeah, I remember that one of those pictures where it showed it.
And that's all of it. They were saying that the water back up, they do that. You can see the picture where the water pushed all the debris that the sewer out of the can.
Yes, sir.
And all of a sudden, it changed that night. All of the water was the topsoil, and some tar and bread put back in there, and that's all it goes. It shows right there what it did. We agreed upon it last time when I was here. And all of a sudden, they switched horses on it.
Hey, Ron, is this something Mr. Page needs to go through, claims committee? Because I think...
I'll go through claims.
You have one through...
If I know Mr. Page is coming tonight, we could have probably rested a little better than...
Well, he told me, he told me to come, so he going to turn it over. The claims committee told us that if you don't hear from us before the next meeting, we going to turn it back over to the councils. That's why I'm here this day.
Mr. Page has filed a claim asking the city, I do have some photographs, but the claims committee denied this claim based on the fact that he parked cars in his yard in their three, thought those were from 2013, 2014, and 2016, of Mr. Page's house.
If you look at those pictures, you can see cat no water, that those cars couldn't stop it. I don't park, too. I parked the extra car there for a few months, but for the time that water backed up, and cars couldn't stop that water from backing up in my yard. Look at the pictures now, and you can see what the debris was going back in there. I don't care what the claims committee say. The claims committee, the cars did not stop that, and they going back to the time. I got pictures going back to years, and no cars, because cars caused no water to back up like that. Why they changed the drain if the water, if the car caused the water to back up? You changed the drain three times. You just changed it a little six months ago, and we agreed upon it the last, when last I was in here. You sent the sewer out, and everybody looked at it, and the guy dug the drain, and they put a whole noke basin in the thing, and then all of a sudden, the water, my cars were causing the water to come out there. Look at the pictures I got, and the pictures they talking about they got.
When you said they agreed to it already, who...
John, did you all not agree to take care of it? You looked at my pictures and said...
We looked at the pictures. I think we sent it to claims, but I think city did come out...
City sent the claim. The claims came out later.
They claimed out later?
Yeah, the city. You saw the picture, the water with the debris, and some sewer out there, and we agreed that the water was coming, backing up with the drain, because you took the drain out and put another, of a small pipe in, and put a bigger pipe in.
Brooke, did all the works come out and do that work?
Yes, sir.
When was that? Do you know?
Probably about three or four months ago. We upsized the pipe through the property of the city of Northport Arms.
All right, so we upsized our pipe, that we owned that property, so we had to do it by virtue of being in the right-of-way, because we owned it. And with the claims committee, it's been denied, and I think, Ron, he can still appeal to city council, correct?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. With council not having what's, we don't have any what's...
I can put the, I'll copy the claim in the package at the next council meeting.
Mr. Page, it'll have to be at the next council meeting. Reason I say that, I have to give these new council members and our mayor time to look at that, because if there's a claim that's been denied, you have every right to come back to council, but with them not having the information, I'm kind of, well, shooting the dog until I know how much your claim is, what you're requesting, and all that, so we can try to see what we can and can't do on it. That's pretty much the gist of it.
You remember the water, you remember the water?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We got that fixed, but now we got to go through the claim process.
The water doesn't back up in my yard, the debris doesn't back up in my yard. I don't have pine trees, but you see pine trees going back in, and the back pushing the stuff all back toward the back. I mean, and they standing, the car, how can... Let me show you one thing. We do one thing, boy, though. You see the two places where the car was parked out?
Yes, sir.
You show me where a car caused the water to back up like that, and push the debris back up in there like that. Are you sure?
Well, let's do this.
There's water here, man.
If it's been denied by the claims committee, like I said, you have every right to come back to council. We just need to get that information from staff, and if you'll give us that time for mayor and council to look at that denial from the claims committee, it'd be on mayor and council.
Okay. You see those, those, those concrete things?
Sure.
That's where the cars were parked.
Yes, sir.
And in the water, and I got one on the other side, I have a car claiming, that's the one where the truck was parked, and I also have one where the car was parked. It's sitting on, and it was claiming that the cars, it caused it, the cars, it caused it. It's cars sitting on the concrete, it's too little, that little.
Will you give me this? Give me this, give me this...
I need all these pictures.
All right, that way, that way, mayor and council, the new members of mayor and council...
I got them on my iPhone.
Okay.
And that's no problem. You all stand up and do what you want to do, and I got to back up my iPhone. I got to back up my data, so you look at it, and you can see what, what I'm going to say, the water caused it, or whether the back up or the sewer, you know, the drain.
All right, Mr. Davis is off. Ron, will you get members of council and mayor's office, stay informed, so we can discuss it?[1494.13]
Yes, sir.
Next council meeting?
Will have it on the agenda the next council meeting.
It'll be on the agenda the next council meeting. It'll be up to when mayor, members of council get this information, Mr. Page. Thank you, thank you for, for bringing it to our attention. We're just trying to get past this point.
And they said, uh, this, this is like twenty-something years ago, when grass, even though, and car, I didn't park a car, no, and the grass grew all around. These are cars where the cars there. You brought that one too. We both...
Is that you?
That's me.
That's the young man right there, man.
Well, yeah, that's all right.
Just you can put him in here, just keep him together.
I'll do that. Just the way I have a claim, you want, you want to copy this?
I, I, I've got that copy.
Yeah, you can get that. And how we want to phone up?
Yes, sir, please.
Two zero five.
Okay.
Three, three, please.
Yeah, but this way I can, I can give this information to our new members of council.
Yeah, I see mine, I, uh, Scott, I'm not here today. I want to meet him. Yeah, Councilman Hogg?
Yes, sir, he, he's, he's not here today.
Yeah, I hope that he's here.
Well, he should be at the next council meeting. Yes, sir. We will, we will...
We should talk and give you this...
Yeah. Yeah, I will, I will get Councilman Hogg to give you a call, Mr. Page.
How long has this been going on?
Uh, I mean, that twenty, twenty-six years, they changed that pipe three times. Well, the first time I made a claim, they, uh, they changed, they borrowed a machine from the running out there and pushed it all the way through, but it pushed the water from one, from one drain to the next, be over. And they, they, they took care of it, but there was a time in the end of five years maybe went by, it happened again. So once again, they changed the drain pipe again. And they borrowed, you know, a load of saw, you know, not saw, topsoil. And I spread topsoil myself and I borrowed seed myself and we planted again. And then, uh, later on, when, uh, university changed their grass from, wrecked the grass from, the saw from our natural grass to, uh, turd. My son worked out there at, at university, he borrowed me a whole truck, several, uh, paper loads of saw that was there and I planted it there. And the natural was very quick and all of a sudden, the rain started stopping up again. And it stopped, it bagged up in my yard. Once again, it, it run my yard, it got hard clay. And so, uh, they came out again, changed the pipe, put another pipe in, and put another cat basin on both sides and it ran, it's running good now. But before then, the water was up to us, all the deep, deep in my yard with the rain. I couldn't even get in the yard. So my thing, I was around, I have a muggle law seat that we couldn't even get out of the house with it, because of the way to the rain. But so then, I think that's one of the, that's third time they changed it probably. This time, I feel, I feel, I've been going on my own, I feel it's time for them to, to get, it's not in my, it's not, the rain is not on my problems, I'm in my problems only. See it on the line next door to the place.
Give us a chance to look at this and find out exactly what the point is and what we want to do.
I've been, I've been very, I've been very willing, I've been, I had, I had blew up.
No, I appreciate that. Mr. Page, I will give you a number directly to Councilman Hogg. And, uh, if you'll give us a little time so the new mayor and council can look at it. Don't forget your... Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Next citizen sign to speak is Mr. Jody Johnson. Jody, thank you for coming. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jody Johnson. I live at fifteen thirty-four Bellwood Lane, Northport. And amazingly, I've got nothing to complain about tonight, but, Mr. Darn, I'd like to thank you and your group for getting that hillside where people can walk at night and, and clean up and, and everything like that. Uh, well, I do have something to complain about. And there's, uh, somebody put a telephone pole right in the middle of the curb. And that water the other day took every bit of the leaves from top to both sides of the hill and threw it through a neighbor's yard into his house. Is there some way you could look and see if that pole can't be removed or moved back or reset or something so that water will flow down into the, the, the ditch to go into the, the drain behind the flue?
Jump, jump out and I'll get, get together on that.
All right. That's, that's what I wanted to say, thank y'all again. Uh, there was something else, but, you know, the age gets you and I forgot what I was going to say, other than is the park, park coming up tonight?
Actually, uh, on our agenda, and I guess, Ron, if you want to give Mr. Johnson a brief synopsis, that was actually deleted and, uh...
That's, that's correct. The, uh, between, between the last council meeting and this one, uh, then this Hambride, uh, suggested we look at something we did with, that resolution number ninety-three twenty-nine. I've got copies here right of that. But basically lists not only the, um, Northport Community Center park, but also the Hassan Community Center, the Kentuck Park, uh, and the Sutecan Park as being, uh, protected from getting sold, uh, by the city unless there's a vote, uh, by five members of council and approved by the mayor. So...
So we don't have to worry about it anymore until we're gone.
Right, I would think that's...
Well, thank y'all, we appreciate it and glad to see you.
All right, item fourteen is mayor and council members' business. Uh, Councilman Hambride, District One.
I had a couple things I already mentioned about the administrative meeting, so, uh, the other thing I just want to sort of, did I, what Mr. Rose was talking about, about the public works and all the employees, uh, you don't realize how dangerous it is. Uh, I think most of you know that it was an accident and some of them got hurt, not seriously, but it could have been. And you got to think about that with all our employees, because a lot of them out there right beside the road are police and fire. Uh, they put their life on the line every day. And we sometimes take it for granted. And I just know that they go out of their way to help us and I know back during the, uh, ice we had, uh, Mr. Councilman Davis would tell me how he, I'll just say him tell that story, but it is very good that these employees put their life on the line. And we've got a pretty good track record, I think, but that accident of night could have been really bad. If you saw the pictures, you wonder how they got out of it, so, uh, somebody would watch and know. But anyway, that's, that's about all I got to say. I do appreciate it myself, I know that.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, under my, under my business, again, dovetailing off of that, we got a really good staff and them to come out on rugged conditions on a Friday night when everybody else is getting warm says a lot about our staff, especially public works and our, our police and fire, but especially the folks you see every day who just take for granted. You see your trash man, your garbage man every day. And we take them for granted, uh, because you, you mess around and let your trash not get picked up one day. So that's my two cents on that one. And Mr. Webb, again, reminding you, January eighteenth, uh, at four thirty, of course, four P.M., we've got our public involvement meeting again. The public's encouraged to come, please come out. It's a, a dim road project, again, AlDOT is investing millions of dollars, hopefully, at the intersection of Bridge Avenue and Fifth Street to put a traffic circle in and one more as you come onto the off-ramp coming in at Northport. Again, that's, uh, a way to alleviate traffic. And again, January eighteenth, four P.M., right here in the council chambers, will view the presentation, have a formal presentation at four thirty or five o'clock, and maybe do some comments and questions afterwards. So again, encouraging everybody to come out there. That's all I have under my business. Uh, Councilman Sullivan?
I'll tell you, if you want to recognize Joseph and Brooke, everybody on the staff, public works, Joey, um, for the other night, y'all did a really good job. Y'all always do a good job. Uh, I know the conditions that night were pretty rough and I'm glad y'all are okay, a little sore, but, uh, it's scary getting that call, I can tell you. Um, just happy to see y'all okay and I appreciate all the work y'all do. Thank you.
Councilman Davis?
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you.